Councillor Esposito? Councillor Fawnin?
Here.
Councillor Pucci?
Here.
Councillor Sienna?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the September 25th, 2012 special town council meeting?
I'd like to second it with two corrections. First one is on page five, under item B. The second motion, it should read "Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth." And on page 11, under H contingency transfers, the last sentence should end "and two injured."
And "two" what, sorry?
It's referring to the police overtime. And it should be "two are in training and two are out on injury."
Thank you.
And then just make a note that when they're posted online, that they're posted in the correct order, because ours are not and the page numbers are off.
Moved by Councillor Fawnin, seconded by Consul Angeloni. Subject to the changes, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Duddy?
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councillor Pucci?
Yes.
Councillor Sienna?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the September 18th, 2012 special meeting?
I'd say move.
Moved by Consul Angeloni, seconded by Consul Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Abstain.
Councillor Duddy?
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councillor Pucci?
Abstain.
Councillor Sienna?
Yes.
No water pollution control authority. Move on to reports committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, Economic Development Commission.
The commission met last night. We had excellent attendance and we had a presentation. Oh no, I can't remember Jillian's last name.
Jenny Kozlowski.
Who gave a really great, great presentation on area and regional economic development initiatives and asked for some feedback. And in fact, there was handouts from last night at your diocese. You can look at them. And we are also talking about meeting with the agricultural committee of what they can do for economic development for them. And they're also would like to take the lead on meeting with all of you in planning and zoning on future planning for Route 80. So I think they're going to start meeting more than once a month. There's a lot on their plate.
Item B, Permanent Project Building Committee.
No report they meet next week.
Item C, Potato and Corn Festival.
I believe we have somebody from the festival committee here? I guess not. Okay. You have in front of you, again, not all the bills are in, but this is the detailed report we have as of right now. Certainly I can take any questions, but you might have to...
We're calling this a detailed report.
Yes, you were looking for, I think, some more detail?
Has anyone on the Finance Committee or anyone looked at any invoices from all these vendors?
Not the actual invoices, no. I'm sure the Finance Department will.
Somebody should be looking at all these invoices, because all everybody threw us a bunch of numbers in front of our face and said, "This is what we spent and this is what we took in." And if the Finance Committee is not looking at the invoices, somebody's got to look at these invoices, besides the Finance Department or whoever else looks at these things, just to make sure everything adds up. That's the way I would run my business and I would expect that's the way that this town would run taxpayers' dollars that we use on this.
So all signs off by the department that came here? All the invoices are signed off like normal recreation invoices?
I'm sure you have a whole file of them, right?
They're all sorted by vendor name that can pull them off?
Yeah, I mean, somebody's got to look at this stuff.
Yeah, can I have them closed off?
That's fine. Doesn't bother me, but I wouldn't mind seeing the invoices myself, to be honest with you.
Well, I mean, if you want to, I want to bring them in.
Well, I think the council should look at it, too, to be honest with you.
So if I could just have more direction on what I'm...
Yeah, we want to see the invoices that were actually from all these vendors and how much respect to all these vendors and how it all matches up to what's on our list. That's how you would run things if you were, like, really on top of things. As far as, we're the finance board, basically. We're the last stop on this whole town. So I would think we would want to look at this stuff and make sure. Makes sense to me, to be honest with you.
Bonnie, can you tell me the significance of the four items that are highlighted in yellow marker?
I believe those, and Anthony, I don't know if he's going to be here, too, but I believe those are some of the newer ones I had for him. And, but I don't, again, I thought someone was going to be here, so I apologize.
Right, and some of the projections are way off $1,000 for signs. Thirty-eight oh nine it ends up being. I mean, that's almost $3,000 difference. I want to see how many signs we got and how much each sign cost and everything else. That's the way it should go.
I just have a question on the electrical. For $8,600, I thought we were pretty much done with major electrical things at the Potato Fest from other years, things that they had done. So I'm just curious as to the cost of electrical and then there's electrical supplies.
Right, and that doubled. That was $4,079 projected to $8,640.
When I came on tour, I was told there was still work that had to be done, some different changes of where things were going to be going, those types of things, and they still had to do electrical.
I think they added wire, heavy wire for refrigerators and coolers.
Well, we'll see the invoices, we'll know.
Yeah.
I would like to see the invoices by the end of this week if we could.
And the other thing is the parking initiative. I know that was new this year.
Yes.
Do you know if those, if they paid the sports groups by checks or did they give them cash out of the money that they, because I believe they offered $300 per team for a four-hour shift.
Check.
So they were checks, actual checks, correct?
Anthony, is there an explanation as to why those four items are highlighted or is... I can't prepare the report, I'm not sure to be honest with you. It could have been changes since the last time.
Okay, and there's questions going on right now. If you could come to the mic.
Is this best work?
Yes, please. The question is why there are certain items that are highlighted on the report? Because they haven't been submitted yet. And I don't, that's why we wait as long as we can, because not all the bills come in on time, so I could get bills in December that surprise. So those are bills that we had last year, but they haven't come to me yet. Mosquitoes for a thousand, typically we'd had that donated in the past, but I wasn't involved early on, so I don't know whether they'll be donating that or not. So I put it in just because.
And all the invoices, you didn't let go to the...
DFG, I'm over at the bills with him. And we added the business expo this year, so all new electrical outlets had to be put there. Emergency lighting had to be put under the tent. The crafting section also was extended this year, so there was electrical outlets that had to be put out there as well. So more time or labor.
You've handed all invoices in, Dan Anthony?
Yes.
Okay, because we're going to get a copy of all the invoices by the end of the week.
Well, my other question is because electrical is over the $7,500 for bid, and I know we didn't go out to bid on it, the only thing that we went out to bid on was the fireworks.
Right. Unanticipated, because I, we had figures beforehand that were way under that, so that's why I held everything and met with him afterwards, because I never anticipated any of that. A lot of the bills, too, his services were $6,000. And then electrical warehouse during the weekend, before and during the weekend, Public Works is out getting things that they need that they didn't anticipate. A hot boiler blew, they had to run out and buy one of those. So there was unanticipated costs that those are all added in there.
How come we ended up using...
It's not all DFG.
Well, under electrical, there's electrical DFG and then there's electrical supplies, so is the DFG for $8,640?
I realize everyone's looking at it, I broke it up. Yes.
That's all DFG, right?
It is, it is.
And I think if we...
Yes, it was unanticipated. Wouldn't expect it to be that high, because when we asked them early on in the spring, it wasn't that high, so.
And gross revenues were down from last year, right?
Gross revenues?
They're off about $2,000.
Yeah, I actually thought it was very good revenues, considering that weekend was excellent. And the fact that we came in a solid 10 grand over was, and a weekend like that was phenomenal. Especially having started off so shaky, a ten bishop mayor, so I think the committee did a phenomenal job. And in the end, we tied it all together and turned out to be a phenomenal...
You come out with a profit in the end, that's a plus.
Yeah, it is.
And the staff for $2,850, who is...
That was voted on back in November that we would need some additional support and that was, they voted Trish Lynn in, but, you know, she had some family issues and some things that kept her away from the desk. And so that, we had anticipated five, $10,000, and we didn't even use that.
Is there a breakdown of what the amusements and rides brought in as far as profit?
It's usually 15. It's been 15 straight across the board three years. About 25 percent of what their revenues are. So in the past, I usually always put that 15 in there. I never even usually counted their revenue, because the revenue is...
What I'm getting at is we, as the financial board of this town, we need a much more detailed report on this whole thing.
Okay.
Somebody's got to see every invoice that we pay out. I mean, honestly, we should be making a lot more money on this than just $10,000 about.
I, you know, I have to kind of go back when it all created. Really, that was created for money.
Right.
It never asked the town any money to run, and it really was strictly to strengthen the community. And I watched, I watched year after year, and when it finally came, I watched this community get stronger because of it. And so I, I really never really felt, I feel this is fantastic. I mean, they're all around, there's 250 volunteers that come together and try to figure out, there's no gate, there's no gate fee.
Right.
It's one thing that you can come, that we're not constantly asking for money. It's wonderful.
Yeah, I think it's a philosophy. In fact, I was talking to people who had been at another fair this past weekend, who said they could not believe what the costs are to get into it and rides and food, and it's very, very expensive. So it really is a philosophy of...
The Podok Festival, ever heard of the Podok Festival?
Yeah.
That's town subsidized. He's never made a profit.
Why did we bring in North Haven Police Department? We didn't...
There wasn't enough.
We had enough officers. Police force to handle this.
I think that was a first. I don't think they've ever had to really do that before.
I would have hired someone else. But it was very nominal.
Yeah, it's shortage.
Pam, on the electrical supplies, I know they have to run, like, outlets to each booth or craft or each year, do they have to, can we save those or reuse? You're reusing, yeah.
Trust me, I've been learning over the years. Because I really, I got a frame, it comes right back.
Right, right. Yeah, because that's a huge savings, yeah.
I think, if you ask my opinion, I think that this grant is wise. I think we could do a better job, which would bring us in some more about it.
Absolutely.
Meaning that I think that there are, but again, you're lacking support of people that would help, you know, generate donations. You know, we shouldn't even be paying two grand for potatoes at a potato festival. Those should be donated. There's always were donated in the past, but it takes manpower. And our office wasn't up for going out and shaking hands, and you really need to go out and shake hands, you know, and really develop relationships in order to get more sponsorships and do all that. It's really done on the fly, you know, because we're always rushed into everything. But it really, it could be done better, I agree.
Pam, I'm the last page. I don't want to, but they had, it's just miscellaneous.
Okay.
I think there's a double here, because it said parking tickets, I think you had it in two places, and also...
Found a couple of those, yeah, excellent.
Yeah, public bench repairs and then repairs the benches.
Excellent, that's, yeah. And actually, somebody else found some tickets in there. That's between me putting things in and also Pat putting things in, so, yes.
Okay.
He saved us some money.
Almost $600. Do you see it?
Yeah, thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. All right, Emergency Communications Committee.
I think Bonnie was trying to get together a tour of Quorum Park region.
That was all, yeah.
Finance Subcommittee.
They meet next week.
Right. Town Managers Report.
Mottos should be starting demolition, depending on whether by the end of this week or the beginning of next week, should take two days and should be completed. The middle school, I sent you all a copy, I could not believe how fast the state responded back to us after we sent in our ineligible form. So we're in very good shape with that. I just had a conversation, I'm waiting to hear back from the state to make sure we're all set now with the middle school, so that's great. The joint meeting with the Board of Education on the State Health Plan is cemented as of today, October 9th, at 6:30. It'll be here in this room. It'll be informative, they'll give a presentation. And the latest, because I know you're of interest to that, with the press box. They have received donations totaling $3,000. Total cost of lumber and building supplies has been $2,200, but they are still trying to raise funds. The drawings of the bleachers, they're going over the structural engineer to take a look at with a stamp. And the largest expense is going to be steelwork, which they believe is in excess of $7,500, but they're still trying to get a feel for that. Tom Cowell's been working with the gentleman who teaches over there, because the kids aren't going to be involved with this, so he's on top of that. And also, we should be receiving, because you asked for this at your last meeting, a report from our marshal on the suspense list, and he hopes to have that to me by the end of this week. And I think that's it, unless anyone has any questions.
Community events, presentations. Presentation with the Totucket Historical Society.
Hi, everyone. My name is Suzanne Texera, and I am the president of the Totucket Historical Society. We're going to take this opportunity to pay our yearly rent payment of $1 to the town. That being just a little publicity stunt, okay? Our mission of...
Make sure I get the dog, yeah.
Our mission is teaching, preserving, and building community. And the sum that we pay may seem very small, but we'd like to share with you what we bring to the community. We take care of the interior upkeep of the Reynolds Beer's House. We help educate our schoolchildren to local town history. And this spring, we had a wonderful program with the second graders that lasted through all day long, and they spent four hours on each end of town butter making, weaving, planting sunflowers, making silly putty. And they made greeting cards and they sang in the church in Northford, you know, learning about how the church was the center of the community back in the, you know, early, our early history. They had a great time and we got a wonderful response from the teachers. We provide an exemplary website of local history pictures and research documents and videos, and that can be found at totuckethistoricalsociety.org, all one word. We have exhibits bimonthly at the Atwater Library and periodically at the Smith Library. The Atwater Library, we have a dedicated case that we just change out, you know, every two months, but Smith, we have to, like, wait our turn. We provide speakers on local area history free of charge to the community. And we try to keep track of the preservation of North Branford history through an emphasis on research papers involving the history of North Branford, and these are all available, one copy in each library in town, and the smaller papers are available on our website. The society has built the Miller Barn to house our and store, house our store of farm implements, historical farm implements, and display items obtained from archaeological digs along the Farm River. We appreciate the support we receive from the town council, the town manager, the mayor, the public works for all their logistical support, and all of our townspeople for supporting all our activities and events and always sharing their camaraderie with us. Our next event is our Colonial Dinner on October 14th. And for all the members, I just have a brochure for everyone.
Thank you.
If you'd like to join. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Item six, Citizen Statements, Petitions, Correspondence.
This is about our 1251 Belton Avenue. I wanted to make a few comments, and I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make the public hearing on the 16th in support of the contractors in town. One item that I've been thinking about, you know, is the fact that a lot of these contractors in town, sure, they're contractors, that's their primary way of living, but a lot of them are active members on the fire department. And if they can't get work in this town, and they go out of work, out of town for work, Utah 911, who's going to come to your house if they're all out of town looking for work because they're not given work in town? They serve dual purposes, and I don't want to eliminate or bypass anybody, but two guys I think of, because I see a lot of Kenny Newbig and Gary Pedersen, they could be in the middle of installing a very complicated system or, you know, they'll drop everything and run to help your family out. I know you've seen it with your...
So, they're great people.
So again, you've got to stop thinking about the dollar. You've got to look at the overall value of these people that work in this town. One right here, this gentleman donates many hours to the town. You know, luckily, he works here in town, but if these other guys are going out of town for work, you lose the daytime coverage, because there are very few people on the fire department anymore that still live within the town limits. I mean, it's sad, I mean, it's the way it is, but... So when that preference comes up, remember, sure, they're contractors, but they give constantly back to this town in other ways, in all hours of the day and night. The other thing I want to talk about is the Potato Fest. Sure, you can turn this into a cash cow, but you know what you're going to lose? You're going to lose morale in this town. It is an event, and the fact that they cleared $10,000 is good, because attendance was light this year and the economy is down. If you went to the Durham Fair this weekend, I think one of the ticket booths had just said mortgage is here, because it cost you a fortune to get in there, just to get through the gate, and then, you know, everything else is high. We aren't in their category, and I don't think we ever want to be at Durham Fair. This is a small town, middle of the Mason-Dixon line festival. It brings out people from town, it's good for, you know, the town to finally take a weekend and get together, and...
It's great. I just want to make sure that we're getting everything out of what we spend. We have to watch every dollar that we spend, and if we can spend less and still do the same type of thing, it's a better thing for the taxpayers, it's a better thing for everybody, because it lessens the burden all the way around.
Correct.
It lessens the burden on the rec center and it lessens the burden on everybody. That's all I'm looking to do.
And again, to defend Pam's office, the staff wasn't there to keep, it's not the big problems, it's the little things. It doesn't drive any organization for you, you know, you run a business, it's the little things.
That's right. I look at every invoice from my business.
Right. So again, that's a good thing to keep track, but at one point, you just got to say they did a good job. It's volunteers.
They did a great job.
And it's very hard, because, again, I do the agriculture area. It's the five-minute phone calls that you get 100 of that tie you up. It's not the great big things like a tamra or something, it's the little things, and...
Tamra was crazy, too, though, about $7,000.
So, you know, again, I mean, I hope, I don't think they should grow anymore, I don't think they should cut back, because I think if they have to invest more, it will cost more.
Right.
But again, I understand what you're coming from, and I think, sort of like the Durham Fair, as more of these modifications are made, they will become more permanent, I don't think, maybe we'll ever see permanent buildings, I don't think we need to go back.
No.
But again, because that's, that's too much, but again...
That's all that other stuff.
And again, Dennis Canone, he took the tents and said, "Look, everybody's going to get a tent from hauls, they're approved, everybody's going to get this right kind of wiring for a refrigerator, it's approved, be sure, won't hassle you about a nice pool..."
Well, they have to be approved, they're not going to open.
Exactly. Well, he was very good as a chairman this year, but he was proactive. He saw the problems ahead of time from previous festivals, the dress. People were showing up with unapproved tents at the last minute. So this way here, if you're a vendor, you get in one of hauls tents, you get one of the approved lighter bulb outlets, so you can plug your refrigerator, be sure, happy, you can't work out of the pool. He, you know, he was ready for the problems before they got this.
Just want to make sure that we didn't spend an extra $10,000 or $15,000 and we didn't happen.
It came at a cost, because those outlets probably had to be built. Now they're available for next year, they can be rolled right back out, but again, they were a necessary safety measure. So, and what did he get? Nothing but headaches. He didn't get a dime out of this. He got nothing but headaches.
That's what we get, we don't get a dime out of anything. No, we believe, we're laboring this, could we move it along? I got a public hearing.
I'm strong about this, because we're there every year, we know we can, we can't do anything. It's just part of enjoying meeting the other half of the town.
I agree, I agree.
So I want to see it go sour over a few bucks.
Yeah, I agree, thank you. At 7:30, we have a public hearing for the proposed ordinance 2012-01, which amends Chapter 1, 2, 3 of the Code of the Town of North Branford entitled Building Construction. My understanding is...
Yeah, there is going to be under 8C, there's a proposed fee change, and I don't know anybody's here to speak on the public hearing, but it looks like we're going to need another one, because there's been a review of the numbers.
John, we're going to have to reschedule the public hearing?
Yeah, my recommendation would be to table the public hearing.
Just reschedule.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reschedule the public hearing until...
November, I got it right here, something, November 20th.
November 20th, 2012. For the Chapter 123 Code of North Branford entitled Building Construction.
Moved by Consul Duddy, seconded by Consul Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Duddy?
Yes.
Councillor Esposito?
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councillor Pucci?
Yes.
Councillor Sienna?
Yes.
I'm just going to go back to Citizen Statements and Petitions, because I think Roger wanted...
Hello, Roger Martin Lane. I've got a few things to say, and one of them is sort of directed indirectly at Mr. Sienna. I don't know you, I know everybody else on the council, and I have to say that you have a big pair of shoes to fill. Al was, he was a top shelf guy, and this is probably the best panel we've ever had in this town for 47 years that I've been living here. And I just hope you can step up and don't be afraid to step into the Board of Education. Don't be afraid to step into the Police Department. If they need it, make them accountable for every dime they get. Listen to this gentleman right here. He's right on the money. Another thing, for the seniors, we still have to get a meeting for some kind of a tax freeze. I know you and talking to Joanne about it, and I've talked to a couple of people in town, and they're... in town, and they're saying, "Are we gonna get a tax freeze, are we gonna get a tax freeze?" I said, "Well," I said, "I talked to Anthony, and they seem to wanna get a meeting, and nothing's happened yet, so if you would, do it." You know, the other thing is, I've been, I go around town an awful lot, this is probably directed at Mike, is there any way to get the traffic light on Village Street and Seventeen, and Village Street and Twenty-two made into blinkers after nine o'clock in the morning till three?
Village Street and Seventeen is on blinker, goes on blinker at, I think, nine or ten o'clock.
He's talking about during the day.
I've seen eight, nine cars come down that hill, beep, 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 for one car
to go across, they wait a second and a half, and they're gone, and they go across, during the day, I'm talking.
I don't, I don't think they'll do it during the day, there's, there's, you know...
No, how is that, is that state?
The liability's too high because of the traffic.
Really? I just thought, you know, I didn't know if this...
Thank God we're getting them at night, you know.
Well, they go to blinkers.
It does, yeah, ten to five or six, I think.
Yeah, both of them, Clintonville and...
The afternoon, we got gas going to four and a quarter, four, it's gonna be four fifty-three soon, and we're stopping and going for one car all the time, a dozen cars, and it's just, it just doesn't seem right.
Well, we had some nasty accidents, we could ask Anthony during the daytime there, you know, and that lights, that lights kind of revise some of the...
Okay, we give it a shot. Anthony, don't forget.
I won't, as a matter of fact, I emailed Gina, I'll email her again.
Okay, and I guess Bonnie, she's gonna be there too?
Sure, yeah, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, item seven, resignations and appointments. Item A, Ronald Sienna has resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I moved, takes up resignation of Ron Sienna from Planning and Zoning as an alternate.
Seconded?
Yeah.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Pucey, Roque.
Mayor Candy Laura.
We're hoping he wasn't resigning.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fucci.
Yes.
Councilor Sienna.
Upstate.
Item A, unfinished business discussion in action. Item A is the five-year capital improvement program tabled from the September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve meeting.
As I had mentioned in the cover memorandum, we have, we have to go selling bands in November, and the timeline to get that all together, we are really, really tight, so we just need to know, if there's anything that's gonna move forward, we need to know tonight, and I know you want me to do a very extensive long-range plan, which I can, but I couldn't do it in a week, so if it doesn't happen tonight, you can do it again in February, obviously there's more expense, you're gonna end up paying for the same types of things that you're doing for November, so we just have got to have direction for those November bands, and as I mentioned too, I think you've got to, at minimum, do what's mandated by federal government, the narrow banding, some of the communication items, and the only other items that I was questioning is, there's a few that are related to weather, so we would need to know whether you're gonna move forward with getting some of these things fixed before winter comes in. And Anthony and I can answer questions as best we can.
Why is a boiler costing sixty thousand dollars for a house? That's what I wanna know. John, you might know something about that.
I think a lot of it has to do with historical, I'll tell you, the prices of some of that are unbelievable.
I really, I don't.
No?
Well, it's just a house, sixty thousand dollars.
I don't know why it's costing sixty thousand dollars.
Sixty thousand for a boiler, that just doesn't seem right.
It's a lot of money.
Where do we get prices on this boiler?
The problem came from Mr. Marola.
Is it made of gold, I mean...
I don't have that.
That's, that's way out of line, as far as...
I mean, honest face value is, I don't know what they're doing there, but that sure seems real high.
You can get a boiler for probably five thou, less than five thousand dollars for a house that size. Where's sixty thousand dollars coming from? That's what I wanna know, and I wanna know who said it's gonna cost sixty thousand dollars, and I wanna see who voted the job for sixty thousand dollars.
Did this go up to bid?
No, we get estimates at this stage, we will go up to bid.
Yeah, but you know, once you put something like that on the street, you know what's gonna happen with the bids, I mean, you know...
I'm forgetting, but that's way, way out of line.
My, my problem is, we held, we held the town to basically zero, and now we're bonding two point four million dollars.
Well, we're not, we're gonna do...
No, well, you know, if you don't want to, you just need to say that, but we need to know, 'cause we've gotta get...
Exactly, but this...
Well, I really think the high school roof, I mean...
The high school roof, we know, has to be done.
Right, and if the...
Narrow banding.
Narrow banding, all the stuff that's mandated.
Right, well, the roof isn't mandated, but I think it's just because of...
No, but it leaks.
Well, yeah, I mean, and that was one of our, when we had, when we put the new roofs on, that was one of our objectives, is to have enough time to get it all done correctly so we could do it next summer.
Are we having a problem with the roof that we just put on there? Is it leaking?
Yeah, there were, the last storm we had last Friday, both of the schools roofs, we have people over there looking at them now, and we've had others, those storms during the summer where they were absolutely sideways, never had a leak, but we do have people looking at both schools.
So, we have a problem with the new roofs we just put on?
The last storm, yes.
And now are they guaranteed from the contractor?
I think they're on that.
I think the only thing that I remember was the materials on the roof, and so...
So, the workmanship's not guaranteed?
No, you're beyond that. The permanent building committee will have, be looking at those roofs on Tuesday, Tuesday.
No, I mean, we're gonna have to do the narrow banding, just, you know, there's no way we're gonna get around that.
Getting back to the boiler, I mean, what was, did we do a request for proposal or anything like that yet?
I don't know, I saw this...
Where's this estimate coming from? It's the first I'm hearing of it.
Anthony, do you know what, 'cause I wasn't involved in the capital budget.
I don't know, but it's...
I don't remember that at all. I don't remember anything about this.
Well, it wasn't in our capital budget when, during budget time, we didn't discuss it at all, so this is something that has come up between then and now, 'cause this is the first that I've seen it.
We should have somebody look at it and see if it...
Yeah, I've got it as a note, we can do that.
That just does, that numbers doesn't make any sense at all, that's all, you know. And I don't know why we've got a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars in for Police Station Architect, when this town certainly can't afford any more additions for the next couple of years.
The thing is, we don't even know what we're doing with the Police Station, we should plan this out a little better, and make sure that if we're gonna do this, and we're gonna eventually move the ambulance building out of Norfolk, we should do it all in one central spot, and do it smart, instead of piecemeal and everything like this town has always done over the years, and it ends up costing people more money that way. We need to get a real plan and look towards the future, ten, fifteen, twenty years, not just what we have to fix by tomorrow. Everybody's throwing stuff at us, we gotta get this done, we gotta get this done, we need to start thinking a lot longer range.
And forget, your bonding doesn't go down to two thousand and eighteen, so your bond rate's gonna stay high, and the more you bond, the higher it goes.
The only thing I'm worried about a little bit is that half a building that they built for all of Franny's dump trucks that are sitting out in the open all went there.
Well, I mean, that's, that's in there, that's in there, you could approve that tonight, you could approve the school roof tonight.
And we have to do the narrow banding and stuff like that.
We'd have to form new motions, correct, to dissect this part to approve.
Well, there's a question mark down here.
Under suggested, well, and you gotta fill in the blank.
That what we wanna do.
So, we can get it over to Planning and Zoning, and I guess...
And narrow banding's gotta happen by, what, twenty fourteen, by mandate?
Yeah, but you know what, nobody's...
Thirteen, oh, so we have, I mean, this has to get done, that's a mandate, so narrow banding has to get done, Public Works and...
Well, it's not gonna be done by January of thirteen.
No, but we gotta approve it.
Because they've been needing to determine for communications for months and months, and there's been no decision on anything.
Not every state across this country is ever gonna fit that, and within that.
Is that a federal mandate or state mandate?
Well, it's, it's a mandate, it's mandated by FCC, but there's not, every, there's no way, every state, every country, or county is gonna fit within that two thousand and thirteen, that's gonna be blown out probably to two thousand and fifteen before they're in full compliance.
Didn't we have grants or anything to go for any of this stuff, narrow banding or anything like that?
No, there isn't anything I know from that, it's just a mandate.
Unfunded mandate.
It's an unfunded mandate, so it alters...
If my memory serves, didn't we have work done here on the HBA system, not too long ago?
We replaced every, every wall unit except two, we replaced the ceiling units on this part of Public Works, we replaced all the condensers outside, basically all random, except these last two walls.
And the records are...
That's correct.
Anthony, do you have an idea of what the bond, what bonding rates will...
Bond items.
Okay, so what happens with, if we bond for the money now, but we don't do these projects, some of these projects until next summer, what happens with the money that we get on the bonds?
You have a federally set mandate of how your spend down has to be, has to be a hundred percent spent in twenty-four months of the day of the bond sale. There's so much in six months, so much in eighteen months, and so much in twenty-four months, so next summer debt, it would fall in a parameter, and that would work as far as the IRS rules, so it's part of the rule, the school would kind of...
Is the money invested short-term, from when we borrow it?
Yes.
To when we actually have to use it?
Every money invested.
Okay.
Anthony, how do we, what is the interplay between bands and bonding? We borrow money to do construction, and when the project is completed, we go out and bond it.
That's correct.
So, if we chose to do Franny's building, what would prevent us from doing that with a band?
That was my intention, my intention was to do bands now. We have the bands maturing from the school last year, about four point two three three million dollars, maturing November first, we have to do the sale October thirtieth, October twenty-second is the drop-in date, any final numbers, October twenty-second. I need bond resolutions at your next council meeting, we have to, you guys, I have to call the bond council tomorrow and say, "I got resolutions for Project X, Y, and Z that the council approved last night." They'll get bond resolutions at your next meeting, it gets finalized, and instead of getting four point two million dollars of the bands that were gonna roll one more time, I may get four point five million, or four point five million, whatever number you guys agree you wanna do out of this list.
Got it.
And then, a year from now, in two thousand and thirteen, November of two thousand and thirteen, when they mature, we'll have final numbers on the school as far as eligible costs, what our true net share is, we'll have these projects finalized, we'll know exactly where we are, we'll bond it permanently at that point, which actually works out well, going back to Mike's comment about the debt peaking, like two thousand and thirteen, fourteen is when it peaks, you're not gonna currently bond this till thirteen, your first principal is not quite till fifteen, sixteen, so it actually works out well as far as our debt tapering off, so the lane of school, while it's cost a little bit more in short-term interest, which the rates are, you know, single percentage, it's stupid.
Right, it's garbage.
So, it's gonna actually help us in the long run to keep our debt service level. So, tonight, basically, in that bond column, you need to say yea or nay to which projects you wanna do, again, I'll have bond council draw up resolutions for you folks to act on in next meeting, and then we get the ball rolling, and then go...
It seems, it seems pretty clear to me, we're not prepared to make a decision on the Police Station.
No.
We've spent a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for design work, it's something we don't even know what we're going to do, or what we're going to do, is a hundred and twelve thousand dollars wasted.
Thrown away.
So, that one, I don't think should be in there. The only one that I'm really on the fence on, and I think Vinnie just mentioned it a while ago, is the other half of the Public Works building, which has been a priority for some time that we keep putting off, and we're doing it to our own detriment, because we're dreading our equipment every winter that it sits out there.
Right, and those trucks are already... And we're blasting their trucks now.
Yeah, can you clarify, oh, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
I'm inclined to bite the bullet and appropriate that bond money to finish that building.
So am I.
Do you have, do you have more information on the Stanley T. Williams courts?
No, the guy never showed up.
Well, let's put that off another year.
Well, yeah, but the issue becomes, not just the Stanley T. Williams courts, we could put that off, but it's the courts that the high school team plays, and also that's open to the community at Memorial by the middle school, 'cause those had to be done in the basketball courts, and then Norfolk Park, I believe, there's some tennis courts and some basketball courts there.
And we're at a point with the condition of, you know, you're almost gotta repair and wanna shut them down.
Right, and we can't, we don't wanna shut them down, they're well-used, all those parks.
Well, is there, I see on the bottom, the HVAC work...
Those are not bond items, we need to do that separate.
Right. Now, I, I, well, I, my question is, is how much do we have in, in closed-out capital projects, since we're all, I think the sixty thousand is a high number for the boiler at the Reynolds Spears House, would we have enough to do at least the tennis courts at Memorial Field, or by the middle school, out of the closed-out capital, rather than bonding for it?
Well, that brings me to a point I was gonna mention, as you look at the projects that are listed, if you go to the other funding column, another project that Public Works is the roof replacement for seventy thousand, and that's in Fran's storage building, that's in like a switch sheet. You have to try to recognize and kind of match up your projects with a twenty-year bond period, so in looking at, I was gonna suggest, and you just sort of read my mind, that the tennis courts rehabbing them isn't really a twenty-year project.
Right.
We found out that our tennis courts lasted, you know, a couple of years, we're doing them over and over, unless you do the full, gut it, go down to the stone and everything else. I'd rather switch the seventy thousand over to the bond fund column, move the forty over into the other funding column, and work it out somehow, because it's gotta be a twenty year life that you're gonna pay for with the bonds, and obviously, the tennis court really isn't a twenty-year lifespan, so while you approve the projects per se, I propose to move the seventy from other funding over into the bond fund column, that's definitely a twenty-year lifespan on the new roof they get over there, and then move the forty over to other funding.
Anthony, I think you've got, you've got some sort of ledger sheet that we don't have.
From last month's meeting?
Yeah, that was in your last...
We didn't bring that.
I do have that.
Now.
It was last, last week's meeting, the CIP proposal?
Yeah.
We had seventy thousand as other funding column, which was to replace the roof in Public Works, definitely a twenty-year project, it makes sense to bond that project. The forty thousand dollar for tennis courts resurfacing and patching is not a twenty-year lifespan, so to bond something greater that we're gonna have the useful life of it doesn't make much sense. So, I would propose that we do Fran's Public Works project as a bonded project, switch the forty thousand from, as listed in bond funds, over to other funding projects, and make the numbers work, and so I guess, if you folks approve the projects, we'll get the bond resolutions that I think we're gonna be bonding with, and then we can proceed that way.
So, we would have to add, even though we were gonna originally do Franny's roof out of other funds, we would have to add it to this bond?
We'll move over to the bond column, and a bond resolution's made up for your next meeting, 'cause just thinking about it, it's not a twenty-year lifespan to do what we're doing to the tennis courts, it's not a full gut down to the foundation and everything else, it's just a surface-type project.
They haven't done anything on that roof project yet for Franny's, I thought they were trying to get that done before the winter.
Uh, it's not been done, 'cause it hasn't been formally approved yet, no.
What was, I thought it was approved during our budget process, that we were using the money from other capital, closed-out capital projects, that's how we were funding it.
Typically, the CIP itself doesn't get much happening until the council blesses that as a separate animal.
Oh.
The funding column for the general fund ties it into the operating budget, but the actual projects typically, a lot of them don't start, I shouldn't say all of them, some of them that require the bonding, obviously, don't start, the bigger ones don't start until the CIP is blessed. Obviously, Fran's trucks were ordered, some projects were completed, some of the paving work was done, but the large ones were not done yet. Do you want to copy a lot of the sheet for us, you have to work off of?
I actually, I have one with me. I got a question for you on this narrow banding, what exactly is it, and what's it gonna do for us?
What it's gonna do is, the FCC is getting pressure for people to get licensing, so our fire frequency, let's say, is one fifty-one point one nine oh, and next, they're gonna go out another digit, basically, so it'll become one fifty-one point one nine oh five, let's say.
So, in other words, there's less space between frequencies?
So our fire frequency, let's say, is 151.190. And next, they're going to go out another digit, basically. So it'll become 151.1905, let's say.
So in other words, there's less space between frequencies?
Narrow banding. So to have a 10-meg, or frequency span, maybe a five-frequency span, it allows them to sell more frequencies.
Okay.
That's the whole premise.
And we're going to have to do this eventually, no matter what?
That's correct.
Okay.
We've, I know Mike's of the opinion that it may get extended to deadline. Nothing formally has ever been said about that. January 1st is still the deadline that everybody knows about. It's been talked about for years, so whether they postpone or not, if you had a crystal ball, you would know that, but why take a chance if it's not, you know?
Well, if we have to do it, we should just do it and be done with it. And we have some important things that we need to do, and we have some things that we don't need to do, and obviously, we need to make a decision on this stuff, guys.
All right, I'd like to make a motion. Be it hereby resolved that the North Bramford Town Council instructs the Treasurer-Finance Director to forward the following projects: narrow banding for the police and for Public Works, the Reed's Gap Tower Improvement, high school roof, Public Works Complex Sander Building, and the roof project on the Public Works Building. And to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 8-24, and bring it back to the Town Council upon receipt of their action.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin.
Well, just to clarify, the whole CIP goes to plan and zone, not just the projects. So I'll revise the CIP, include the projects that he has referenced, but the whole document goes to that part.
Are you ready to do that? The rest of all those capital plans?
No.
I, I don't think so.
Just the ones we approved.
Anthony, can't they just do the bonding as an 824?
The whole CIP, I think the whole program.
I don't know.
No, I think you can break it down.
In the past, it's been the whole document.
Because that's why you asked me to do the whole long-range plan.
All right.
Yeah.
So exactly what's going to happen, then? Here. With this motion that you're making, exactly what, because I'm a little unclear now.
By state statute, there has to be what's called an 824 for any kind of major capital items.
Okay.
I mean, in the past, and that's what the guys are talking about, I've split it up, you know, six, whatever. They're meeting this week, so we're going to have them added to the agenda.
Right.
They come back, and they would recommend, is what they're doing to you, that you move forward with these projects. If they reject, then you can overrule them by a two-thirds vote. From there, Anthony's going to, as of tomorrow, start working with the bond council on getting all these resolutions together, because they're formalized. Those will come back to you at your October 16th meeting. You have to vote on those bond resolutions.
As a package or individual?
We can do them individually.
Okay.
And then we move on to the November bond section.
So we can bond whatever we want of these projects and not bond whatever we don't want?
Even at that point.
At that.
So what's your reservation motion?
Pardon?
So what is your reservation?
No, 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 because we're talking, Anthony's talking about bringing everything, whether it's the bond items or not. Like, for example, the things that are going to be funded by the other capital.
That's not what our motion was.
I know, but Anthony's saying you can't split them. I've split them before when it goes to P and Z.
I'll check with bond council to be sure, if they want the whole plan adopted, or just projects adopted, whatever they need for their.
For the bands, though. Does that make sense, Joe?
Yeah.
But then.
I thought we were doing.
We have to change the motion.
Well, yeah, but then, will you, if they want the whole CIP thing, will you, will that, your timing be thrown off because?
No.
We'll work with it.
And we can still do what we want on it, but.
Right.
I know what you guys are interested, I mean, the rest of the out years are just, you know, pie in the sky.
Right.
The current years, all that really matters. I have a feel to what you guys want. So we're definitely not doing.
The police.
No.
Okay. HVAC wall units?
Well, that was under something.
That's out of the other money.
That was a new project that we haven't, haven't approved before, so is that an inner, inner out?
No, that's it. We have to do those, because they have no heat in those rooms.
Yeah, but it's not under.
Yeah, it wasn't under.
It's not, it's not under the bonding.
Right, it's not under bonding.
Right, but it's a new project that you didn't approve previously, that's not.
So we have to approve it.
And then the 40 for the tennis courts, we're going to leave them, we're going to move over to other funding column.
Right.
Right, there's just going to be another motion. This is just for the, the way it's kind of presented to us is like it needs two different things here. So we just did the, the bonding.
The main.
Right, the bonding we just did, and we're going to have to do the other stuff, so.
Right, that's the way I thought it was presented. So this is for the bonding.
Got you.
And then Bonnie will break it out for us after. Did you get the motion? I believe it was made by Counselor Angeloni.
That's the motion you just have to do. Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Hmm, yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Still, yes.
Counselor Sienna?
Yes.
Okay, so now we need a motion to move forward on the other projects, which are coming out of closed-out capital projects?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'd like to move forward, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the following projects, which will be funded out of closed-out capital projects. Town hall HVAC units.
Those HVACs are heat pumps.
They're like the.
Because they do a heat and cool, right?
Right. Like having a hotel room kind of thing?
Right, it's a heat pump, basically.
And the, the roof repair over the town clerk's vault, and the tennis court repairs for the intermediate school and Northford Park. And I'm, I'm holding on Reynolds Spears just until we get more information.
Yeah, there's no, there's no way I'd vote on the $60,000 boiler.
Right, so.
No way.
Even if they were redoing the whole heating system, it would be high.
That's crazy.
You know, I don't.
We're all going to agree with that.
Yeah.
So that was seconded.
Right. Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. And Bonnie, we're still going to get the pricing for these other courts.
Yeah, I'm going to bring it back to you in a minute, sure.
No, but I'm talking about the other courts that they didn't get back to us on. We'll still get that pricing, right? Okay. Roll call?
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Sienna?
Yes.
So Bonnie, can you give us more information on Reynolds Spears then for our next meeting?
Yes.
And then, Anthony, you'll be able to tell us what's left in these closed-out capital projects, so that we can see once what to do with that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Item B, Updates to the Defined Benefit Plan. Dr. Pleasance, table. Item C, Amendments to Chapter 123, Proposed Ordinance, 2012-01, Building Construction. Town Manager's Search, Next Steps. We need to formally make a motion to make us a committee.
Formally make a motion to make the full council a search committee for a new town manager.
Good. Second.
Moved by Counselor Caprio, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call?
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Sienna?
Yes.
I'd like to amend the agenda to add, I guess you want to put 11B maybe for executive session to discuss resumes, town manager?
You don't need, you don't need, it's not a meeting under the FOI, so you can meet with impunity.
Okay.
And just one question. Tom, are you going to provide us with numbers, or?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I thought, okay.
We'll give it to you later.
All right. Let's see. New Business Discussion in Action. Item A, Connecticut Clean Energy Community.
Yes, I met with representatives of UI. This is kind of a Phase Two for the Connecticut Clean Energy Program. We'd never participated in Phase One, but I thought it was something that I think is a great idea. A lot of towns I have worked with have already been a part of this. And tonight, we have Sherri Borelli from UI, who's going to tell you about the program, and whether we really want to make the commitment to move forward. So, Sherri, thank you.
Good evening, members. I am Rich Lombardo from the UI Conservation Group, and this is Sherri Borelli, my partner tonight. And just like Bonnie mentioned, we're here to talk about that Clean Energy Communities Program.
Thanks.
But just before I, we do that, I'm just going to let you know that I am the, the energy engineer assigned to the, to the town for any conservation projects that would save on energy. And Tony will give you the energy on these heat pumps, so I can see the quality of our energy incentives. We have, over the last six years, done a couple of those projects, either on the municipal side or the Board of Ed side, and we've given the town or the Board of Ed approximately $84,000 in incentives from the Energy Conservation Fund Program. Those projects saved approximately 4,000 kilowatt hours, which represented about $64,000 annually of saved energy. So with that, we'll talk about the Clean Energy Communities Program. Sherri will do that for us.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us this evening. I'll go back a little bit on the history, so that, and I won't take too much of your time, but in 2004, the Clean Energy Fund, which is now SEPIA, the Clean Energy Finance Investment Authority, they rolled out a Clean Energy Communities Program, where they offered the communities an opportunity to earn points for solar panels for their town. Utility companies did not have a program that offered anything like that. So in 2012, we decided to mirror their program and join forces and roll out a joint communities program. So we have an energy efficiency trap, where the communities can earn a bright ideas grant for participating in our programs, our residential programs, small business energy advantage, CNI, Board of Ed, and municipal programs. Once the municipality reaches 100 points, the utility company, the Energy Efficiency Fund, will give that community a grant. North Bramford is eligible to receive a $5,000 grant, once they achieve that 100-point status, to use towards any energy efficiency project that's going on in the town, or energy efficiency upgrades, community event, that would prove to be beneficial to the community with regard to energy efficiency. As of right now, the community has 37 points. And in order to encourage participation in our programs, I would work with the community for the residential, residential income eligible. I know that there's an energy assistance program. Work with small businesses, work with the small businesses to encourage the audits. And as Dick mentioned, we do have a lot of ongoing projects that we can encourage the municipal buildings and the schools to participate in. There are a few steps on the handout that I gave you. The first step is to sign the pledge, and we're asking you to reduce the energy consumption by 20% by 2018. We're also going to help you reduce your energy consumption and see what that is by assisting you with benchmarking. I partnered with students at the University of New Haven, and I will have full-time or part-time assistance in getting that done to your EPA for volume management. So, do you have any questions?
It's going to save us money.
It is. It's a win-win for the community. We're looking to still holistic approaches, keeping in tone with environmental issues.
What do you use for baseline year?
We are allowing each community to go back to 2008, because a lot of communities use era harming to do capital improvements to some of their buildings in the years 2010 or 2009. So we're going, we are going to go back to 2008, if you want to. You don't have to, you can go back to 2010.
Our town is split between two different utilities, Wallingford Electric on the north end, and you folks down here. Are you involved town-wide, or is it just within the region you, your company services?
We're going to just be with United Elementary.
And how does that affect our generation of points, our eligibility for grants, et cetera? Is it just on the southern end of town?
We have the residential meters. So for every meter that you have for the residential and for business or small business, 1%, every 1% participation in the program will earn you points. And the resident, 1% participation in residential will get you six points based on the meters that we have in that program. And then for businesses, so we have it listed by camp.
So it's just the southern end of town?
What communities are you presently in now?
I have 11 communities signed out of the 17 for UI Service Territory. And out of the 169 communities throughout the entire state, when the program was originally rolled out, I believe 153 communities are signing the original pledge. There's no penalty for signing. You're going to earn all the points, or your points, there's absolutely no penalty for signing.
And you're going to help us develop a strategy, obviously, to try and save.
On the action plan, Dick is actually going to be retiring at the end of the year, but he will be replaced with a.
Who are you?
With, I've already volunteered him for any committees that you may need. So he, but he will be replaced with an engineer that will be assisting with the municipal action plan.
Doesn't seem like we can lose anything by doing it. It's going to help us more than anything.
And we also don't have to comply, right? I mean, if we find, as we go down this path, that, you know, to save $50, we'll have to replace a $50,000 boiler, it's not cost-effective. So at any, at any point, we can choose to not go.
Correct. So when, when you reach the 100-point status, and I'm going to present you with a $5,000 check, if you tell me that you have no opportunities to use this money, then I'm not, that's the one we lose here. I'm not going to hand you the $5,000 check for.
Right, we're not going to get penalized for anything.
Right, exactly.
I'd like to take another, take a look at that. We're actually UIL employees, so that encompasses the gas companies, and the commercial gas representatives to try to market gas services and stuff, they're on our floor, within our, and I'd really like to take an attempt at trying to find out why it's $60,000 for a boiler, because that's a little outrageous. I don't know whether there's trenching costs in here, or anything out of the ordinary.
We don't have.
But if you guys allow me, I'd like to critique the vendor, because that's what I do. We work vendors all day long. And I try to qualify equipment to get gas incentives.
Right.
So that's another thing. Not just the electric side, the gas side as well.
Right, we're already working with the gas company to bring gas to the town home.
Yeah, easier.
Yep, and we're already, the high school's probably going to go to gas, too, to save us money.
And I'll be the one that's going to.
Reynolds Spears is right in front of the gas line.
Right, and I'm sure there's a gas line in front of that house.
So I don't know what the situation, maybe there's a decimal point mistake there, I don't know.
We can only hope.
Maybe there's a happy hour mistake.
Yeah, we can move back to 2008 as a baseline, and encompass all of the improvements we've already made.
Right.
I just have a few numbers here that I wanted to share with you. In 2010, our residential programs for Home Energy Solutions, or Home Energy Solutions, are eligible. 38 residents participated, and 22 income eligible. 27 in 2011, and 21 in 2012 to date. So I think raising awareness in the community about our Home Energy Solutions programs, or our income-eligible programs, and encouraging participation would really ramp up the numbers towards that bright idea grant, and raise awareness. And I'm happy to work with the town manager on creating that awareness. When I did come in to meet to discuss this, I was able to pick up your energy assistance program. And I've worked with other communities where I've actually sent a direct mailer directly to them, and based on our guidelines, let them know that they already qualify for this program. All they have to do is call our 800 number, and we will actually come in and do the audit. So these are things that I'm actually writing and available to do, regardless of you sign the pledge.
So if we put that in the Totaka Times, it says you guys will come out and help people.
I'll put that in the.
Totaka Times, and this way, people will be aware of their opportunity to save money on their electric bills.
Yes.
And maybe we can help the townspeople out a little bit.
I'm actually happy to put the community ads in, work with, I'm not sure, company.
Well, the Totaka Times gets our whole town and everybody.
She may manage just no UI customers only, because of Wallingford is the private.
Right, well, if you put it in the Totaka Times, you're not going to split it up between Northford and North Bramford.
Home Energy Solutions, and income-eligible, those programs, they are a staple of customers for UI. The points would come to this program.
It's not like they're going to just run half the paper from North Bramford and half the.
No, no, I know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe some of my business cards with Bonnie, if you would like to take one of those, I think.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the interim town manager, Bonnie Therrien, to sign the Clean Energy Communities Municipal Pledge.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call?
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Siena.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
State draft 2013, 2018 Conservation Development Policies, A Plan for Connecticut.
State Connecticut drafted up a draft plan which you should have for your plan of development and conservation. Carol Zever, Town Planner, brought us to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendations and review, and you have their comments and recommendations in front of you, except I reversed them by mistake. In that last, second to last sentence, Planning and Zoning Commission members' concerns have to do with the change the state is recommending, making some of the areas of North Branford balance growth areas. So, you got to flip those two. But Carol's here to do a short overview. So, Carol, it's your turn.
Good evening. The state has revised their process for their next plan of development, which is a five-year plan, that they are now charging the Office of Policy and Management drafting, of which that agency has started that process and we're in the first step of the three-step process of what's called cross-acceptance before actually we get to the endpoint. And they bring back to the state legislature the final revised document that they're proposing for the state plan for the next five years. Most of you are probably aware of last year's project in which the town went in for an interim, changed to the existing plan that we are still under. And we asked for three development areas to be changed because to be consistent with the future plans that this town had come forward with. And there were three areas that for years we had been trying to get into the correct category. But because they were in conservation areas, the state was relentless in changing our requests over the last 20 years. And actually, it didn't reflect how our town had developed under zoning and under actual land use development. And those were the three areas that the town was concerned about. That was the former town hall site, which was being proposed for future redevelopment. And also, the site up along Route 80 as it goes to East Haven in order to have redevelopment there for possible sewers, extension. And also, the third site was up in Northford where the Honeywell North, Northford Ice Pavilion is, where the backland that has been zoned since the 70s for industrial development could be changed to a growth area. The two lower ones that I mentioned in the Branford, North Branford section along Route 80 were being requested for the neighborhood conservation change. The state legislative committee overrode OPM's objection to this change, and they unanimously approved it. What now OPM has done in this new development plan has drafted a whole total reclassification of categories that puts basically these three areas that we had won to be more in a development and redevelopment area for better funding priority. They put it back into this balanced growth area, which they came up with, which would have priorities of not only conservation, but also some priorities for development. And it would be a balanced thing. However, because we had evaluated also the plan that they were using and proposing that showed that a lot of the previous other plan existing now that had neighborhood conservation areas, which we got approved for, and growth areas, had been changed on this new plan to be under priority development areas. And we felt in order to protect our hard-won battle last year, that we would request that these be reclassified into this new category of high-priority development area. In reviewing the draft plan two, I've noticed other areas, towns that have had this balanced growth added to their areas, which they also had previous neighborhood conservation areas. And whether or not those comments from those towns will make any difference, it remains to be seen because we're only in the first step of getting the public comments. Then there's also a second step and a third step where eventually, all the comments are then drafted in a statement of disagreement or agreement with the draft plan and forwarded to the continuing legislative committee before it then marches on to the full state legislature for approval in 2013. Now, at least this helps protect our initial investment in that decision that we had won last year. And it remains to be seen if we can make it through the process and the other towns that also have the same dilemma gets a sort of continuing legislative committee. So, that's what the, in a nutshell, what we're asking the council to formally forward these comments, which Planning and Zoning has endorsed. It's pretty straightforward. We try to make it as simple as possible without ending up having any additional arguments at this point. But certainly, as we further go forward for the explanation, I'm sure all the different towns that have issues like this will be elaborating further. Okay, any, any other comments?
So, can we forward a letter from our mayor to the legislative committee that's looking at this and give it a little more...
Well, when, when it does come to that point, that will be towards the end of this year. We have to go through two more preliminary steps in this OPM process that they're going through by state legislate, by the state statute that we have to work with now for this kind of development of a plan. So, until that point comes, you know, certainly, at the right time, the next step, we'll probably be able to get that input from our state legislators, but at the right time, okay? But here again, we're only in the first step of a three-step process before it goes to the continuing legislative committee. And, you know, they had voted last year unanimously in support after all our state legislators representing our community here spoke in behalf, and it's quite a long public hearing and hard fought because obviously, OPM was objecting to it, among other things. You know, your, your brother was involved in it and, you know, he realized what a significant win. Other towns had tried to do interim changes within the five-year period and were not successful. So, I think the fact that we're at the end point of, you know, the existing plan is more significant because it's fresh in that committee that has jurisdiction initially over the, the plan before it goes to the legislature and also by, by state law. They are also still the agency within that legislative process that has the interim between the next time another plan is adopted by the state to, to make changes in between that first year and the third, and the fifth year when it's in development.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you, Corinne.
I'd like to make a motion to send all of the comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the state of Connecticut for our recommended changes to the state's draft plan of development and conservation.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Siena.
Item C, I believe we did, but it was leased between the town and the Totaka Historical Society. Now, this is a new one for Little Red Schoolhouse.
I move the motion to authorize interim town manager Bonnie Therrien to work with the Totaka Historical Society to develop a lease agreement with the town for $1 a year for the Little Red Schoolhouse.
Second. By Councilor Duddy, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Siena.
Item D, Finance Committee Draft Agenda.
I think the only item that we forgot to add on there was formally establishing the 1% capital fund with work. We need to do that too, so.
The Finance Committee Agenda. Is that, is that Finance Committee or a council?
We'll eventually come back to the council.
So, it's just discussion purposes? I'd like to amend the agenda, add item G, BOE, 1% capital budget.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Siena.
Yes.
Bro, that was G or E?
Item 10, Citizen Statements.
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion while we're still in the new business to amend the agenda to 9E for Emergency Operations Center for Discussion and Possible Action.
Moved by Councilor Esposito, seconded by Councilor Fucy to add item E, EOC, Discussion and Possible Action. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Siena.
Yes.
One of the things that come to my attention, I remember in getting some minutes here from June 28th of 2011 for establishing the center and possibly, and the movement of it, which I understand has been moved to town hall. But one piece of a very important part of it seems to be missing, which is the generator, which it's my understanding there's no money in the budget for the generator. I don't know if, am I correct for that, Anthony? Okay. My only concern is it's, we put something together, but it's not 100%.
Did we move it to town hall?
Well, apparently, it was moved. I mean, I only could get a hold of a motion to establish the committee.
To go for a search of grant money.
It appears from memorandums from Chief Seward that it was relocated with some funds that were some grant, some grant money.
Is that something we need to authorize, John? I mean, that's been somewhere since 1971, I think, right?
That's been what, since 1971?
That's been at the police station since 1971, and they have a generator, I would hope, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, why would we have an emergency operations center in a place that could lose power?
I mean, it's all good and well to have it here, but you could start with the lights on in a crisis. But when the lights go out, the safety of going from point A to point B, and also no generator or no plan, so it seems like this was just put together, number one, without council authorization to movement, move it. I mean, in 2011, we did vote to establish the...
That was only to submit an application.
To submit an application, yes.
For grant money.
Right, right. And, and to obtain, to move forward so that they could get grant money.
Right.
The, the motion didn't say anything about moving it.
Moving, right, exactly.
So, it would have to come back to us if they were going to do that, then, right?
From what I understand, only a little bit of grant money was received from, looking at the Chief Seward's memorandums. My concern is the safety without a generator, there's no, there's no plan in place as far as I know. I mean, I would like to make a motion to move it back to the original place until we could put together the entire puzzle or let it be, I mean, we took something that wasn't broken.
We didn't take anything, Andrew.
No, I'm sorry.
Somebody moved it.
But is it moved, is my question?
Yes, yes.
Part of the stuff is...
Part of the stuff is moved. So, something that wasn't broken was relocated and...
So, it was done without council authorization, is what you're saying?
It goes back to centralization also. I mean, why do you want to split things up when you have a police department that's right there?
Yeah, yeah, let me, yeah, let me rephrase that item, sorry. I mean, it wasn't broken, shouldn't have been moved. And we're in a situation now, before we have a crisis, why should we put ourselves and the workers in danger of something that's not 100%? I mean, I would like to make a motion to move it back to its original position or station at the police station for, number one, safety reasons as well, and it should have never been moved in the first place.
Definitely should have never been moved if we don't have a generator to back it up.
But my question would be, it took funds to move it, right? Whose budget is the move back coming out of?
Those are state...
I don't even know who had the funds to move it.
I don't even know how it got moved.
Well, yeah, according to the...
That was done behind, behind the council's back, pretty much. I mean, they didn't come to us and say, "We're going to move the EOC." They just kind of moved the EOC, so...
I think, I think before we move anything either to or back or how, we should, you know, hear from the fire chief and we should hear from...
Well, the thing is, right now, the public safety is in jeopardy because there's no generator to back up any, any kind of safety here.
And, and right now, we're in a...
I should address a couple of your concerns.
Yeah.
Everything that we had previously is still in place.
No, I know that...
The phone jacks are still in place, the wiring is still in place. So, A, was it broken? We were in one room last year, we ate in that room, we slept in that room, we had meetings in that room.
It was broken.
We had the drill here for the EPI, we had breakout sessions, different meetings, different rooms. So, is it better than what it was? Sure. Is the generator an issue? Definitely an issue.
So, is there...
I think there's an issue that we had a situation that we talked about, but we didn't know, we may come onto a generator.
But I mean, this, this is, this is the two parts here now. The, what if Friday, there's a crisis?
Right.
They use the center. Power, power's on when it opens. What backs you up when the power goes out?
You unplug the phones and go up Forest Road.
Forest Road, and is that, would you feel that's endangering lives or there's tree downs and they can't, you know, no?
That center's operational, it's just the EOC that's there opening.
But, and, and the second part is, how do they get moved without any of the council's knowledge? That's, that's my concern. Who authorized the movement of it? That's, that's...
I think the, the assumption was the motion that you folks passed to set the ball rolling was an indication you wanted to move the EOC.
I mean, it should be an assumption, it should be a definitive motion, motion...
I think that's how that motion was taken.
Well, the, the motion was for the establishment, not, not to, you know, look into the, for the purpose of establishing, not, not relocating. I mean, it should have come before the council to relocate it, but I mean, to move from point A to B, I think is endangering the personnel that has to go in the middle of a storm. I mean, it's, you know, it wasn't, I mean, for, since 1971, it's, it wasn't broke.
No, it's not 71, it's not 71.
No, it's not 71, it's not 71. This department was built in like 76.
Okay, so 1976, I mean, that's...
That still doesn't do anything to make it different or right, it was wrong what they did. There was no motion to move it, it should have never been moved, and there's a problem with the generator. If we have a power outage, you shouldn't have to run up the street to where it should be, you should be where it should be.
Do we have a liability problem, too? In that we have, we had a known facility with backup. We moved to a unbacked-up system, and, you know, it's easy, hop in the car and drive down the road. If there's trees across the road, okay, it's an emergency.
Three feet of snow.
You know, we can't, you know, I mean...
Your dispatch center is still fully operational, 911 fully operational. You're using the rule E O C.
But it doesn't make sense to me.
I think I'll go back to Councilor Duddy's opinion. If you have a question, you probably should have the E M D, Fire Chief Seward at your next meeting to address that.
Well, Fire Chief Seward obviously took it upon, or somebody took it upon themselves to move this, you know.
Which is liable until the next time.
I mean, John, if the center is open without a generator and the power goes out, what is our, and somebody gets killed going from point A to B, are we liable? Because we don't have 100% of the puzzle put together?
Well, I would address it in this fashion. The town council wheels the police power of the town of North Branford. You're in charge of the health, safety, and welfare of all the citizens in this town. That means you make the decision, okay? I don't know whether this was a good decision or not a good decision, but I know it wasn't a decision made by the town council. It may have been misinterpreted, but what, what you're expressing is a concern for the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and that is the power that the town council wheels. So, I would, I would approach it on the basis of that issue. You believe that you did not authorize this action, which could compromise, in your view, the health, safety, and welfare, and you want to restore the status quo, Andy.
I mean, that's until...
And you know what, Andy? I'm going to tell you something. If, I don't disagree with you. I think we should, you know, make your motion and put it up for a vote.
I mean, I'm going to make a motion that E O C center be restored until we could have the proper...
Until the council moves it.
Until the council moves it forward.
Right. There you go.
That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Anthony, can I ask a question? You said you just unplugged the phones and go up the road. What besides communications equipment are we talking about putting back at the police station? How big an expenditure were we undertaking?
I don't think there's any.
Portable radios, that's all that was taken. Unscrew the radios, put them back in the jack at the police station, unplug the phones, put them back in the police station.
So, we're not talking about an expenditure of major capital, nor are we talking about a major expenditure in time?
There's no expenditure, no expenditure.
Every dollar that was found, the move was come back in grant dollars, there's no tax on it.
All right. So, if we put it back to the police station, even temporarily, till we can look at this thing and make an intelligent decision about it, there's really no cost that we got to be concerned about? Okay.
Anthony, you mentioned a generator.
Yes. There's... Councilor Duddy and I were for another purpose at Ochinkowski's Towers, as we looked at the radio towers for the microwave with our radio vendor. And in the basement of one of their buildings, they happened to have a sizable generator that runs on natural gas that they were looking to replace. So, when we saw that, Councilor Duddy, myself, Chief Seward, and approached the owner and said, "If you are seriously looking at changing that generator out, we would love to be interested if you're looking to sell it." And October was his timeframe, if I recall.
How old is he?
I don't honestly know.
Why is he replacing it?
He wants to get an outside cabinet one. Right now, it's inside his building, and he wants to put an outside one to have more space in the area. It looks in reasonable condition, it wasn't, it's a Ford 460 motor that powers the generator, it's a 400 amp transfer switch, which would match up with our load over here. It seems to be a perfect match if the numbers work out. He hasn't come back with a number yet, you know, what the timeframe is or what he's interested in selling.
So, it makes sense to go back to the police station and keep pursuing this discussion to see if there's something there at price we can afford?
That's what you choose.
Anyway, we have gas coming in here, I'm sorry.
That's right, when it said the gas, it kind of raised our eyebrows.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a bad thing if it was in decent shape, but for now, I think we need to redo what was not done by us in the first place, or undo what was not done by us in the first place.
All right. Moved by Councilor Esposito, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Sienna.
Yes.
But can we still have Chief Seward come in to kind of give us the...
Well, why don't we wait until we have more information on this generator and all that before we call him in, no? Instead, I'm just thinking, it sounded like the whole thing's even together yet unless you want to bring him in and find out how it got moved. That's another story.
Yeah, we got more information on the generator, I think.
He can come in anytime he wants, to be honest with you.
Well, one of the things, I don't know if I stated in the motion, would it take, if I could amend it, I guess, to take place immediately, effective immediately?
Yeah, I thought that was implied.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, okay.
I mean, it, yeah.
Item 10, Citizen Statements and Petitions. Just real, all right. I received a letter, I just, I'm going to kind of summarize it. It's from Jeffrey P. Allen, 47 Brook Lane, who is a resident on Brook Lane in North Branford. "It would like the council to consider building a sidewalk that would extend from Sunset Road west to Jerome Harrison Elementary School. He often takes his children to Jerome Harrison to play at the playground, they now attend school there. He feels that it would provide approximately 70 homes with a greatly improved access to the school." I'll pass the letter around, it's a little bit more in length, but those were his wishes, and he signed it, Jeffrey P. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, on item 8A, one of the items that was added by Councilor Angeloni on the 1250 for the town clerk's group, that's a repair. That shouldn't be part of the capital plan law. So, I'd like to take that out, and we'll fund it out of the current year's budget. If it goes over and the facility maintenance will come back for money at that point. That's more of a repair, though.
Right. Thank you. Are there any other citizens' statements?
Clip, I just have a quick question. As part of after 9/11, didn't that town get a bunch of new generators, life stations? Do you know how many we got?
We got combination light towers and generators.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that, what, the old corporate judge room was made there, right? How hard would it be to just wheel that generator down there and power it up? It sounds like these guys need more room to work, get rested, and keep working, because there's never an end, or a known end to a disaster.
The problem is, Clip, with emergency management, I think Bonnie will back me, I mean, you can't have portable generators for E O Cs. I think they have...
You'd rather not.
Right. But I don't even know, I don't know if they even allow it.
And the thing is... And they need the instant on, okay?
I believe so, yeah.
I think the bigger issue, too, Clip, I mean, I don't know, in my eyes, too, is just things being done without any of us knowing about it, you know? I mean, something getting moved from here to there, and, you know, when we're ultimately responsible for public safety, too, at the end of the day, and we don't even know what's going on, that's a problem.
But it is, Anthony, because the very people that are providing public safety need downtime, and like Anthony's saying, they're pigeonholed, falling over each other, and...
But we agree, I mean, we probably agree, but...
There's nothing against Anthony, Anthony gives more time than anybody to this, but it's a...
You know, to keep it there is almost emergency mismanagement. You know, I mean, you got to, you got to give room to work, you got to want to work with them, and to kind of move it back, I understand what you're saying, but you also got to move forward to get it back into an area where they can work successfully.
We need to fix things at the police department, we need to centralize things, is what we need to do.
But you don't have any room there for it.
We need to look at the police department, we need, obviously, we need to do things there, and we need to bring the ambulance company down from north, for instance, 80% of our calls are Evergreen Woods, and then we have a 55 and over community going up with, I think, 200 units in it over here, Bonnie?
Well, I have a suggestion for you, then. Why not just deactivate a bay in Company 1? They have a Coca-Cola truck that they don't use, right? You could use, put Station 1 ambulance there and leave one up at north.
And we just spent $346,000 for a Coca-Cola truck, yeah?
No.
What's this, what's this emergency truck that we were...
It has a different one.
Right, but we're, now, now that we're on this issue, we are getting the trucks as we allocated the money for, right?
I get to debate.
Well, all right, I mean, I just, as a citizen, I'm concerned, you're managing my money, you want to do something at the police department, you can't afford to do it, you need an emergency manager center, you want the ambulance here and you want it there, rearrange. If you can't afford to build something in your house, rearrange your furniture. Rearrange one ambulance down here, leave one up there, you got double coverage in an existing firehouse. Just a thought.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other citizen's statements? Do you have a motion to go into executive session with the...
Actually, you don't need to go into executive session.
We have another one.
No, we do.
Oh, not for union negotiations.
Oh, for union.
Strategy and negotiations in connection with collective bargaining is a non-meeting. Once again, it's exempt from the executive session.
Motion to adjourn?
So, we don't meet?
I guess not.
Motion to adjourn, then.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Councilor Fucy, seconded by Councilor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Oh, yeah.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.